Not there, this is, you're not. Close out, exit.
Hi Lynn.
Hi there.
Hi.
Background Dave.
I know, down here at the river.
Nice.
It's a little darker than the rest of the area.
It's beautiful. Hi Fran.
Village Board? Village Board?
Yes.
At 6:30 sharp, it's 6:27, at 6:30 sharp, I'm gonna admit all other members. All other participants, we, Steve isn't, is not here yet.
Are there a lot of other people on?
Yep, we've got Village of Nelsonville one, Trevor Knight, Karen's iPad, Ruth Ann Cullenbar, Leonora, someone named Alan, Paula, oh, there's Steve Veloto, he's coming in, Marty Levy, oh Marty Levy, and Heath's, Heath Salat.
And does Marie have her, Marie, do you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Steve, you need to connect with your audio, he needs to engage his audio. Okay, I'm gonna go radio silent team.
Okay.
I hope it's nice to see you all.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are, hi Steve.
Hey.
Hey.
Hi guys. Nice background Dave.
Thank you.
The park was closed, what are you doing down there?
I'm walking my dog, well, the dog's not on a leash, it's running around right now.
Alright.
We have, is Michael around, on yet?
We are recording.
Yes, we are gonna record, I think.
We'll take the comments, but everyone has to give, you have to give your name and address, since we're just seeing handles or initials or whatever, we don't know who you are, and so, before you make your comment, I'd ask everyone to, you know, state their name and address, and then we'll get to the comment, so thank you. So, just getting into our agenda, we have a few brief things, first is approve a hiring of a labor for our highway department, on the recommendation of Robert Downey, one of our employees left, I think it was a few months ago at least, so we're one short and haven't filled that position. Robert Downey, or as we all know Ms. Bugsy and I, did interviews, we interviewed, I think there was ten or more people, we had about sixty applicants, ranging from, and anything, all walks of life were, were interested in the job, so we limited it to ten people, or broke it down to ten people, and interviewed those, and we both agreed on Donald, and I'm missing his name here. Let's see, I don't know if you, oh, Don, Donald Pavlock, so, so I'd like to make a motion to hire Donald Pavlock at the hourly rate of eighteen dollars an hour, Donald is, has a CDL license, so that's the, our base salary with a CDL, and he would start on June 1st, if satisfactory references and background checks are done, and so I will make that motion, and do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion.
What's this probation period?
The probation period would be a year.
Thank you.
And I think Bugsy will update us probably in six months on how it's going, how the hire's going.
Okay. Did he, did he provide us any references, I noticed on his resume, it was references upon request, did anybody make that request or look at him?
No, so in the motion, it is with satisfactory reference and background checks, but yes, he did, he did supply us with references, and Jeff has those, so I will have Jeff and Bugsy follow up on that, and I make sure everything's clear.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, thank you, next is resolution eleven dash two thousand twenty, closing village parks, we did not have a resolution of this, I talked with the boards, but this is to formalize the closing of the parks, so the resolution reads, whereas on January 30th two thousand twenty, the World Health Organization designated Nobel Coronavirus COVID-19 outbreak as a public health emergency of international concern, and whereas on January 31st two thousand twenty, the United States Health and Human Services Secretary declared a public health emergency for the entire United States, in order to aid the nation's healthcare community in responding to COVID-19, and whereas in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and public health emergency within New York State on March 7th two thousand twenty, and effective through September 7th two thousand twenty, the governor issued an executive order declaring a state disaster emergency throughout all of New York, and whereas there is a growing evidence of the increasing threat that COVID-19 poses to the health, safety, and welfare, and residents, and visitors to the Village of Colespring, and whereas in an effort to reduce the spread of COVID-19, the United States Center for Disease Control states that the best method to slow the spread is to limit face-to-face contact and maintain a social distance, that is, one, staying at least six feet from other people, two, avoid large gatherings, and three, stay out of crowded places, and whereas in addition, the CDC also recommends that everyone wear a cloth face covering over their mouth and nose when they go out into public, and whereas on April 15th two thousand twenty, the governor issued executive order two hundred two point seventeen, which requires an individual over the age of two and who can medically tolerate a face covering to cover their nose and mouth with a mask or cloth covering, when in public place and unable to maintain or not maintaining social distance, and whereas the village officials have recently observed that the village-owned and/or operated parks have been extremely crowded during weekends with residents and non-residents, especially when the weather is nice, and whereas given the crowds, people utilizing the park were unable to maintain proper social distancing, and many were not wearing masks over their mouth and nose, whereas the mayor and village board of trustees noticed this during the weekend of May 9th and 10th, and after consultation of the village board of trustees, the mayor posted limited hours for village-owned and/or operated parks for the weekend of May 16th and 17th, whereas the mayor and the village board of trustees would like to memorialize their prior action and continue it throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the village's residents and its visitors pending changes in guidance from the CDC, or modifications of the applicable executive orders from the governor, and now we're at, and now therefore be it resolved that the village board hereby authorize the mayor and the village staff to close any village-owned and/or operated parks from the hours of 10 a.m. to 7 p.m. on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, that is no, that is no village resident or non-resident is permitted to enter these parks during the days and times noted above, even if just for passive recreation purposes like walking, the village board hereby authorize the mayor and village staff, as well as the police department, to take whatever actions are necessary to enforce this restriction, including but not limited to erecting temporary barricades and posting necessary signage, and the purpose of, and three, the purpose of clarification that following parks owned and/or operated by the village are covered by this resolution, Dockside Park, Riverfront Park, and Mayor's Park, and these new restrictions take effect on May 15th and will continue until revoked by the village board of, village board via resolution. I would like to make the, I'll make the motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
I'd like to, just, I'm not familiar with Riverfront Park as a name, but I just wanted to clarify, so everyone knows, it is the park where the bandstand is, and every, all of that area in the front, right, is that an official name, Riverfront Park, or is that, and that's where?
But that's, that's what it is, and I believe that's what it's called.
Okay, so just to clarify that.
We emailed, I think Marie agreed with this earlier too, by email, that we should also include McConville slash Tots Park in this as well.
Well, I think that's a different, because of the hours, and we, the Tots Park is enclosed, we didn't want, you know, people going in and out of there and congregating inside that small area, so, you know, the, the other parks are open from, will be open from, I mean, be closed from 10 o'clock to seven o'clock.
But otherwise be open, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else? If Michael's on there, can we get a roll call?
Michael has to be unmuted, I think.
Okay, if not, I can.
Hey, I'm there, you unmuted me.
How are you?
Good, trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Veloto?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next we'll get into the reason for the meeting, and having it on a Thursday evening, to talk about the reopening of business, this is gonna be a complicated and a difficult task, but we do have some people that have ideas and have sent them in, and I'm sure we all have ideas and reservations about everything, but it's something, you know, everyone's hurting, everyone's getting more and more tense, I can feel it, and people are definitely on edge, so I would just like to thank everybody in our village, because everybody really has, you know, observed the, observed the orders, and when you think about it, that's a huge task to ask the whole community to just kind of slow down and shut down for, for months, and, you know, and businesses may or may not open, and I'm sure that there's incredible stress on the owners of these businesses, as well as the people that, you know, that don't have jobs right now, or aren't lucky enough to be working at home, so, to all those that have been cooperating and have been working with us in, you know, these, at this unprecedented time, thank, thank you all, also I'd like to thank our highway crew, you know, they're working, they're out there, one of our employees did have COVID, he's fine now, he's tested, he's, has been cleared for at least a month now, I'd like to also thank Larry Burke, who's our officer in charge, who helps keep it together on weekends, and if you've been in the village during, you know, any nice weekend in the last month, I would say, there are a lot of folks here, and that's without stores open, and Larry's done a great job, and the police also that have been on duty, so thank you to those guys, and of course, thank you to all the essential workers, the nurses especially, I'm sure we all know of a nurse that's in there, and, and they have stories, and not, not all the stories are getting out there, it's, it's a horror show, I know down in the cities, I'm not sure on the hospitals up here, I know there, there have been nurses that have come down with it seriously in our area, and I'm glad to say that they, the ones that I know of are all well and doing well now, but it's a scary time, and my son works down in New York Presbyterian in the city, and he just says you don't, you know, no one sees what's really going on there, so, to those people that are on the front lines, and then we have our postal, you know, service, our guy that's delivering every day, door to door, and we have truck drivers delivering everywhere, and then there's other people that are, you know, everything from meat packers on, on down, and truck drivers that are all, you know, out there in this world, and really, we really don't know much about this, so to all those people, thank you, and with that, I will read a couple of emails that we received, and then I'll ask the board if they have any comments or anything on the reopening, and then go to public comment, and, you know, see, see what people have to say. First email is submitted by Ryan, Ryan Trau, I don't see an address here, oh yes, I do, it's for Stone Street. "I really hope that there is someone already thinking about this, but I believe that the only way to avoid a catastrophic loss of business on Main is to close parts of Main down, perhaps only on weekends, and all businesses and restaurants to use the sidewalks and street, so that patrons can safely social distance, I can see a block-by-block phased approach, also using Depot Square and area near the gazebo, I'm sure there will be a million objections to the idea, but I think now is the time for extreme measures." And I have one from Pete Farrell, and this is, "Hello Dave Morandi, hopeful as well with you and the family, just wanted to reach out and make a recommendation to deal with additional pedestrian traffic and crowds in the village, especially on the weekends, as you know, many of the visitors come from out of our zip code, but I've also noticed many, many locals from outside the village, people from East Mountain Road and other corners of Phillips Town now coming into the village to walk our streets and sidewalks, these new, new local walkers, who I've never seen walking the village's streets before, have also increased the pedestrian traffic in the village, I believe coming up with a simple strategy of creating a supermarket-type traffic flow on Main Street from 9D down to the Riverfront would help, if we look down Main Street from the traffic lane, we can have all, we can have all the walkers proceed down Main on the right side of the street, simple signs, cones, with, with signs, and that can guide people, walking up Main can happen on the left side, a loop if you will, make the tunnel into the tracks one way during the weekend, folks heading up from the river can walk over the, over the overpass, supermarkets and other venues have adopted similar changes with much success, this will allow all visitors to continue to come to the village, visit whatever shops will be open, and not impact others from a health or safety perspective, today walkers are walking towards each other, people are forced to walk in the street to avoid crowds, so this will allow everyone to continue to get out and exercise and maintain proper social distancing, without having to resort to going into the street, where many, many cars are coming in on the weekends as well, we have no idea how long this pandemic will last, so we need to come up with a strategy that doesn't turn away our valued tourists and visitors, as well as letting locals and other from outside the village to continue to enjoy our beautiful place, hope this makes sense, please feel free to call or reach out if you'd like to discuss further. Thank you to both, those residents who submitted those, would anyone on the board like to comment or anything before we end, open to, open to public comment?
I'd like to just share something that I got, and from the reopen Putnam County Task Force, and it's basically from the Business Council, they've recommended for local businesses, knowing that we're not ready to open, that we look at the guidelines that the governor has posted for the areas that are ready to open, so I did look at them, and the website for anyone who's interested is forward.ny.gov, what I found interesting is there was a document for each type of business that's ready to open, the interim guidance for curbside and in-store pickup retail business activities that I looked at, is eleven pages long, and the punchline is at the end of it, it says that the link below, affirm that you have read it and understand your obligations to operate in accordance with this guidance, and you click on the link and you have to affirm that to the governor, and in addition to that, there's another document which everyone has to have, which is a New York Forward Business Reopening Safety Plan template, and it's a template, and gives you some blanks where you have to fill in what your plans are for your particular business, the first document has to be signed and kept in your, in your, in your business, as well as forwarded to the governor, the second document does not have to be forwarded to the state, but should be in your business with your business plan for your own, your own area, big, small, or whatever, so I would recommend businesses before we, before we're ready to open, and there are, there are these online for the areas that are ready now for each individual type of business, there's one for construction, there's one for retail businesses, and I'm sure there's one for everything that's, that's in phase one right now, just take a look at them, get an idea of what's coming up the pike, so that you will know what you need to do, maybe.
I found those to be.
Maybe get ready for, so you'll have an idea of what's going on.
I found those to be incredibly helpful.
They, they are very helpful, they're not, I mean.
Yeah, I figured those earlier.
Yeah, the retail one is eleven pages, but it isn't, it isn't overwhelming, it's basically the same things we've been doing right along, I just wanted to tell the, the local businesses that, take a look at it, so when we're ready to go, you're ready with these documents, and we could just, you know, we just get yourself going, that's all I have.
Okay, just a couple of things, one is the, the phase one opening, we haven't met the metrics yet, we have five out of seven for our region, the Hudson Valley is in a tough spot, we, including New York City and the area, so, you know, we're closer to the epicenter, so, we only have five out of seven, so as of today, from my understanding, what I read, we haven't met those yet, so as soon as the metrics are met, then you can go into the first phase, and I believe, once you're in the first phase, every two weeks, it'll be evaluated, and then you'd go into the second phase, so, we're a little bit off for retail to open their doors completely, but phase one would open retail for a curbside, which some people are doing already, and, and I think that's about it, as far as our concern, I mean, the main concern is retail, and when they're gonna open, and how that'll affect our village, so, once we meet the metrics, if we meet them tomorrow, I guess it would be open the weekend, I'm not sure if there has to be any notice after that, but that's the way it sounds so far. That's one thing, one thing I did forget, before we get into public comment, is there are a number of events that we had, that we had to cancel, they're larger events, and so I'd like to ask the board tonight their feelings on opening them, or canceling, you know, canceling the events that are on the books, and there is one request to have a larger event in, in July, so we've spoken to both of them about our concerns, and I'd like to just read one, one, one part in, in the New York Forward brochure, or whatever you want to call it, additionally, when phasing in reopenings regions must not open attractions or businesses that would draw a large number of visitors from outside the local area, there is unsurprisingly a significant demand for people right now across New York and our neighboring states to gather and enjoy each other's company, while people should be able to have fun facilities or events that attract hundreds of people from outside the region poses significant public health danger, as we try to carefully reopen, these places should be closed, and events should continue to be postponed or canceled until the threat of COVID-19 has subsided, so, we have one, I believe in August, which is the Wine Fest, and John Shears Hops, I believe, was canceled, and he would like to have this, a mini, a mini event, but, and he's done, he's done a great job, he has a whole brochure, which I think is either sent to the Board of Health, or to the state, showing how he would social distance or whatever, but my fear is that we're bringing and attracting more people, and I don't know if that's really what we should be doing right now, so I'd like to have the board's feeling on that before we move forward, I'd like to just close, kind of close that window. Anybody?
Well, I, I feel that, I feel that we need to be very careful in this process of opening and follow the guidelines set down by the state as closely as possible. I think we're gonna have our hands full with the number of visitors that are just gonna show up anyway, I don't think we need to make it worse, not worse, but I don't think we need to add more people to that mix that are coming already, as we've seen in other states that were quick to reopen, like Georgia and Texas and places like that, they're seeing a huge resurgence of cases, and, I don't know, I, as a business owner, I want to get open, but at the same time, I also want to protect my own health, and the health of my neighbors and my customers as well, so I think, I, I'm, I am, I'll just say, I'm not in favor of reinstating these events, until we really know what's gonna happen after the, the four phases of reopening actually happen, and we have some data after that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that we're in any position to give anybody a green light on anything at this point, especially large events, you know, we can barely get through opening the retail and maybe opening some restaurants, I think large events are too far away, and for us to say to any of these events, yes, it's okay to do it, we're overstepping our bounds, we don't have that authority right now, because, you know, even if we did get the green light tomorrow, you know, I don't think we're gonna get to a point where we want, you know, a couple hundred people in Mayor's Park at any one point, so I'm, I'm against letting these go, I mean, if they go late in the fall, maybe, and, and that's something we have to analyze on a month-by-month basis, I, and I understand these people are in a bad situation, but everyone is in that situation, so the people that are gonna be their vendors also know the situation they're in, and have to understand that, we can't give them a green light on this, and I don't think we should, at this point, I don't think there's any, any way we should be able to give anybody a green light right now. I don't think there's any, any way we should be able to give anybody a green light right now.
Steve or Marie?
What's the date that he wants?
Excuse me?
What's the date that he wants?
I believe it's 27th and 28th. It's in, it's in July.
Well, right now, if, if the Hudson region is approved tomorrow, it'll be six weeks before we get to phase four, which essentially takes us to the end of June. And at that point, I think we would have a better idea of what is safe or not safe. So I would say that we can't give anyone permission now, but we can evaluate at the end of June, at the earliest. Assuming that, that the region gets to phase one tomorrow. If the region gets to phase one next week, it's then six weeks from that until we get to phase four.
Yeah, I agree.
That's a fair answer. The, the timeline isn't right for us to do that. It might be heard. It's a blank stares. I said, that's how everybody looks. Yeah, I don't think we can, we can't honestly do that and tell somebody they can have an event. The, the time's not there. If we could tell them to postpone till later on and we know things better by midsummer or whatever. Possibly have their event in the fall, but the weekend hasn't already been taken by someone else. You know, I think that's as fair as we can be.
I think to, I think it was Marie's point, the, or not Marie's, Fran's point that the vendor or the organizers need, you know, adequate time, you know, to advertise, to coordinate their vendors. And so then that puts us in a bad position because say we want to reevaluate at the beginning of July, that, that's not enough time for somebody, you know, and that was, that's when we would be able to. So there's no way we can say in beginning of July that you can have an event because I don't think, I think there's a lot of resources that go into the organizing. There's financial losses that will be had if, if it's not canceled in time. So that's one of my concerns and we expressed this to them and the organizer for the Wine Fest, which is in August. And I'm not sure of the date on that. I feel we should cancel both of those and, and then, and then reassess like maybe in July or August. And as far as the fall goes.
I, I mean, you say cancel, they're not scheduled yet, are they?
Not, well, one is actually the Wine Fest is already, they have, they've submitted, you know, their deposit and everything. So that one would have to be canceled. I believe John Shears was, is, I don't have that, the dates on here. It was earlier, which there was no way with the way the phasing goes that he could have it. And he wanted to move it to the later in July. So but that wouldn't have to cancel. We would just not be taking it, you know, make it known that we're not going to allow events for.
We can't allow, we can't allow any events today. We can't allow any events for the next six months, six weeks. That's the governor's guidelines. And it's once we get to phase one that we can identify what that end date is. Although we might like to accommodate them, we can't. The village can, is not in a position to approve to have any of these large events until we get to phase four. And if the timing isn't right for them to conduct an event six weeks from now, that's unfortunate, but that's, that's the way it is.
And that's basically on them and not on us. I'm just seeing that Ruth Ann has put a note saying that the governor canceled the New York State Fair, which was scheduled for August. So, you know, he's going straight through to August without any large events like that. So I think we just need to follow in suit.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to keep it open ended so that we keep having people contacting us and this is how we're going to set up. This is what we're going to do and can we have it August 3rd and then whatever. I, I think we should just, you know, at least I think we should not have any events until the, until the beginning of September. Or if you want, maybe the end of August, I, I just don't think we can entertain any.
I'm fine with canceling everything through to the, at least the end of August at this point, and then we'll take it after that.
Me too.
I'm good with that.
I think it's important to remember that each phase, the phase one, two, three, and four are contingent on getting to the, getting to the next phase of opening is contingent on us still meeting those metrics. So if phase one happens and then all of a sudden there's a spike in cases in the region, then that stops. So we have no way of predicting that, that phase one, two, three, and four are going to happen at two week intervals as they're scheduled. You know, we don't know, nobody knows at this point. So I, I think canceling everything for the time being is the way to go.
It works for me.
Okay. So are we all in agreement with that? I don't think we need a vote or should we vote? I, I, I'll make a motion to not entertain any future large events in our parks until the end of August. And any events that are scheduled, which I believe is only one, to cancel that event also.
I'll second that. I'll second it.
I'll just do a roll call. So we're not jumping in so everybody knows. So Fran is for that. Marie?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
And Steve?
Steve's muted.
Unmuted. Nod your head if it's yes. Thank you.
There it is. Somehow I got muted there. I think I did it to myself.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we, are we good then?
Yes.
Okay. So five, one or five, zero, the motion's passed. Okay. This will be, like I said, a new, new experience here. So we're going to go to chat. I'm not sure how, I think our moderator is going to punch people in. Is that how we're going to do it Fran? I forget.
People are going to raise their hand on the, if you, if you click on the participant list, if you have something to say, just click on raise hand and we'll scroll down and see who has a hand raised and then Dave will be able to call on you. If anyone has something to say, right now I don't see any hands.
Fran, before we get to that, Dave said, Dave, you said you, we want to talk about reopening. Can you be more specific by to, as to what you mean by reopening?
Well, I, I think what we have to look at, and I think what everyone's looking at is how we're going to handle the social distancing. We're going to handle the crowds with that, wearing masks, how we're going to deal with the, the restaurants and, and retail stores when they open. And this could be lines outside of stores. This can mean, you know, it'll be a lot more traffic. You know, places that are, you know, that are usually very crowded, you know, in our summers, you know, during the tourist season are now going to be, you know, won't be complying with social distancing very well. So, you know, I think those are the questions. And like Pete Farrell said, maybe one thing to do is have pedestrian one ways that might alleviate people walking past each other if everyone, you know, complied with that. And those are the things I'm thinking of. How are we going to handle the orders from the governor?
Okay. So can we approach it as, as a pre-phase one, phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four? Since pre-phase one, which is where we are right now, no retail is open. Restaurants are takeout only. People who have businesses who sell food can continue to sell food, but they must maintain the appropriate measures within their shops. Right? That is, they must maintain social distancing within their shops. They must maintain mask wearing within their shops. And that, those are, if I understand it correctly, those are enforced by the Board of Health, the County Board of Health. So pre-phase one, which is where we are right now, the issue, issues are crowding on Main Street and people not wearing face masks. Lines, people sitting on benches on Main Street eating food and potentially lines coming out of food stores. Is that, is that what we have right now?
I think that would sum it up.
Okay.
Well, we also have, you know, we've kind of, we've addressed the, you know, the riverfront, you know. Those were areas that were large, people were gathering and not observing anything. So, so that's under control a bit, but you know, we have to have a police officer down there. So that's one of the actions we've taken. As far as Maitre goes, it's getting more and more crowded and, and, you know, I don't think there's any way to enforce that. We can't continually go up and down Main Street and I'm not sure what you do with that. And that's only going to get worse. And if we have restaurants open, once restaurants, and I know you're only on phase one, but once we get to phase one, those weeks are going to go quick. And if we're going to have signs made or we're going to do anything, we have to start preparing now for that. So.
I agree. So let's talk about social distancing and mask wearing and crowd control on Main Street.
Okay. So we need, so we can talk, yeah. And, and so we're not going to talk, I mean, I, I want to talk, I, I kind of disagree with just, just focusing in on phase one. I mean, because I think they're all going to be, they're all related. So I think that phase one is, you know, if we can control phase one, then, you know, I think phase four or phase three, which will only be four, four weeks later, if everything goes right after that, then we have to deal with restaurants and restaurants not being able to have full, you know, capacity. Where are they going to go? That's going to come flowing out into the streets. How do we deal with that?
Right. And we have that now with takeout. We've seen crowds amassed in front of certain of the restaurants who are doing takeout. People are standing there waiting for their takeout. So whenever 25% seating in restaurants or whatever the criteria is, there are going to be lines outside of the restaurants then as well. So I, I, I think it's, in my mind, it comes pretty much down to the same issues. There are going to be crowds outside of stores and/or restaurants. And they are going to be wanting to maintain their place in line to get inside, either to purchase something in the retail shop or purchase something in the cafe or get their takeout in the home. Or go onto a park bench and sit neat.
I think a lot of the, a lot of the responsibility for that has to fall on the businesses.
I agree with Fran. I agree.
They're going to have to mark their sidewalks with spacing and an understanding that if you have six foot spaces for people to line up for your shop, they can't be lining up in front of the shop next to you, who may also want to get people in and out. The businesses have to, and that's, that's part of what the governor's plan is that each of these businesses has to have. They have to be responsible for how many people are in their shop at a time and how many people are waiting outside and where they line up and where they can be. And if the line is too long, you know, I, I fully agree with, you know, one-way traffic on Main Street in terms of walking. But, you know, it's going to have to fall, we don't have the ability. We've had, we've had this discussion with the, with the County Business Council. And Bob Flaherty brought it up as well as myself. We don't have the ability to, to enforce a lot of what needs to be done. We can have someone walking up and down and we did, Jeff and I yesterday requested a handful of masks. Cause I know the chambers did, the chamber did too. So we have someone walking up and down or at the stores giving people masks so that at least they have masks on. And I think most people walking around do have masks on, but I think
That wasn't the case today.
A lot of this has to be, has to fall on the store owners. You know, and, and there's not, there is unfortunately enforcement is a, is a problem, always has been. And I'm not sure where we're going from there.
Fran, in the, in the 11 pages for retail, does it say that retail owners must, should not admit anyone with not, who is not wearing a mask?
I'd be honest with you, Marie, I did not read it through totally. It does talk about the standards and I think, I will check it through, but I believe it talks about employees wearing masks. It talks about customers wearing masks or social distancing, but I don't know for sure. I would have to read it more closely.
I, I don't under, to me, whenever I go to a retail establishment, the front door normally has a sign that says masks must be, you must have a mask on to enter.
Right.
Certainly that's what we see at Foodtown.
Right.
Number of other stores are doing that too.
Yeah. It, it would seem to me that's just reasonable public health. Is that the customers should wear a mask to be admitted to the, to the, to the business. Regardless of what the business is, whether the business is a coffee shop or whether the business is a retail that also happens to sell food. So it, it seems to me that, and I'm, I'm sure that we have some retail business owners on the call. Is that what they plan to do? Is, do they plan to require that their customers wear a mask to enter their business?
I was at the chamber meeting yesterday morning and that sounds like the way they want to go. They want to have consistent signs for all the businesses that basically are talking about no mask, no, no service.
Yeah, that just makes sense to me. One of the things I had, had mentioned to Dave yesterday is reaching out to Metro North, specifically to Neil Zuckerman, Neil Zuckerman, our Metro North representative. Asking if Metro North could enforce, if they don't already, you have to wear a mask to ride on the train. You have to wear a mask to board the train. So that when a person gets off a train at Cold Spring, we know that they have a mask at some point, we should expect that they have a mask. And for them to board the train in Cold Spring to go someplace else, they should be required to wear a mask. Can we reach out to Neil Zuckerman or whatever the man's name is to ask him to lobby for this on our behalf?
I'd be glad to, I'll contact Neil.
That'd be great.
I think one of the things is that most of the visitors, from what I witnessed, aren't really coming in. The train is getting, more and more people are coming off the trains, but most of the people are driving into the village now. So although we, I think we should definitely do this. I think right now there's mostly, I would say the majority of people are coming in or driving.
Okay. So we had, we had talked about a local law making the wearing of a mask mandatory. Local law for the village of Cold Spring. You're going to talk to John about that.
Yes. John does not feel comfortable with that.
Oh, whatever.
Having it on me. And I can see his point. Right now, the law, there is, I mean, there is the law. The law is that if you can't keep social distancing, then you have to wear a mask. And so everybody on Main Street should be wearing a mask on a crowded weekend. So I don't, you know, I think, you know, adding another law, you know, and I think you brought this up actually, Maria, you know, you know, why we have the law already. And what more would it do if we said you had to wear a mask, you know, when that's already the law?
So we had talked about putting up signs, trees and telephone poles saying mask wearing is mandatory. And we're not stepping on anybody's toes. That's the law.
Yes, we can definitely do signs. And I didn't move ahead with that till we, that's why we're having this meeting. I wanted to discuss that. I don't want to go making signs and, you know, my hand slapped again, but not by you guys, but. I think we have to, you know, I think that's a number of things. One, the chamber is, is working, you know, is being proactive. But from my observation and being at a number of chamber meetings, a lot of, there's not a lot of shop owners on Main Street that actually either, they don't usually go to the meeting. I don't know how many belong. So I think what we need to do is maybe send out letters also with the, where you can get the New York Forward, you know, the information and ask everyone to please read it and, you know, help us, you know, open up safely. I think that's one easy step we can do.
Okay. Relative to the, the problem that Fran mentioned that had been discussed, if lines begin to form to get into a building, whether it's a restaurant to pick up takeout or whether it's a retail to, who happens to sell food. If lines form, our side, I mean, you can, you can hash mark on the sidewalks. But given the width of the sidewalks in many sections of Main Street, that's, that becomes that's, that becomes, um, a bottleneck for people. So I, I'm, I'm interested if anybody has any suggestions how to avoid that, that bottlenecking. Um, so, uh, let me pick on, um, Barbara and Brew, whose property abuts the sidewalk. And the sidewalk there is maybe three or fi- four feet wide. If Barbara and Brew has a line of people attempting to get in to get takeout from Barbara and Brew, and that line forms out on the sidewalk, that essentially blocks traffic going up or down Main Street. And there are other places on Main Street where the same thing will happen, where the sidewalk is very narrow. We're fortunate, in front of the village office, the sidewalk is wider. From Fair Street to, uh, from Fair Street to Church Street, the sidewalk is wider on the north side of Main Street. From the village offices to Campbell Avenue, the sidewalk is wider in most spots. But the other sections of Main Street are not as fortunate and they're not as wide. Um, and I don't know how we, how traffic, pedestrian traffic can be managed in such a way that there are queues to get into or out of a building while having pedestrians pass by those queues or through those queues.
It might be how you. Go ahead.
No.
You're, you're on Lynn.
Uh, a couple of things. I was thinking, it, all we can do is really suggest to visitors and pedestrians where, what we want them to do. I really like the idea that Fran brought up last week and was, uh, reiterated by, um, um, what's his name? Uh, Peter Farrell, making, making, um, going up the hill one way and going down the hill the other way. I, I think that's a reasonable thing that we could do. And I also believe that putting, putting spots on, putting spots six feet apart, you know, six feet from the door of every business, six feet apart, but right against the buildings, where we want people to stand, therefore leaving the rest of the sidewalk open. You know, if they're waiting in a queue, we give them a spot to stand, just like they do, you know, in the grocery stores and, um, and, you know, people are already familiar with this. So yes, it's an inconvenience, but it's, it's something that we can do to, to, you know, help our store owners, um, control the crowds and, um, you know, just a system in this, in this process. And I really like the one-way pedestrian traffic going up and down Main Street. I think it works. I'm not, I'm not sure I really like the idea of forcing everybody to go over to the overpass to get down to, um, to get down to the river, because, I mean, it, the elevator's still not even working. So, and that's a long jog. And also, you know, it's a long jog to take just to get over the tracks, but that's a separate issue, you know, I think.
I agree.
You know, if we put spots, you know, spots with arrows on the steps going, going up and down the underpass, you know, to make sure that people stay on the right as they're proceeding, um, you know, I, I think that's a reasonable thing to do. And it, and it wouldn't cost the village too much to do it, other than manpower. And I'd be willing to, um, volunteer some time to help with that.
Okay. Uh, one, one thing I, you know, we, if we mention a, a particular store or, it, it's just, uh, you know, it's, it's.
I apologize, I apologize Tara. I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that your, your patrons and yourself were causing a problem. Uh, shame on me.
The, I, I think that, you know, the Marie's point is that the south side of our street, and unfortunately, near the restaurants are the narrowest parts in the village. There's at least four very popular restaurants and places that on, uh, well, on both sides of the street. Um, you know, uh, you wanna mention some names? I mean, La Bouchon, you know, that, that doesn't, that is a very narrow, you know, sidewalk right there.
And that's.
As does Hudson Hills and as does Argentina and, you know, and does Jeff Gonzaga. Those are some very popular places that have narrow sidewalks, which, you know, if we're gonna have lines now coming out of them for people waiting to get in, that, you know, that, that, those are gonna be some of the tougher areas. The other ones, like, you know, in front of, uh, you know, Garden Cafe, they have like thirteen feet or something to play with. So I just wanted to say that. I, I mean, if we bring up a, an example, it's, it's not, we're not, you know.
Not picking on you Tara, I'm sorry.
Coming after you.
And I, and I just, uh, I just wanna clarify. I, I just keep hearing over and over again, um, about the lines and the distancing and the wearing masks. From what I understand, unless I'm totally brain dead, the governor's regulation says, you have to wear masks if you cannot social distance six feet away. So the requirement to have masks on, which we're talking about because it is so crowded here, should eliminate some of this worry about people passing close to each other. Uh, I know, I know, I know we don't wanna be crowded, we don't wanna be brushed next to each other, but if everyone has a mask on and if everyone doesn't rub against each other, um, you know, if you're standing online, granted, six feet, if you're in a store, it can't be that crowded, but up and downstairs or walking up and down the sidewalk, provided you have a mask on, um, you should not be contaminating unless, uh, just totally misunderstanding this. So everybody jump in and correct me if you feel I'm, I'm way off here.
I agree. I think there should remind, signs reminding people of that. On all opposed, you know, this is the law. If you can't keep distances, we, you know, we're a crowded street, uh, crowded village on weekends. You know, please wear a mask, it, it's the law. If there's no social distancing, I think we, we can do that. I think having one way, uh, I, I think it would move, move pedestrians better, you know. And well, whether it works or not, I don't know. I think we have to, have to try whatever we can and, and see how it works. And hopefully people abide, you know? You have millions of people in New York City that, you know, somehow stayed, you know, safe, uh, self-isolated and, uh, and in our whole area. So hopefully, you know, when things open up, people will be, you know, that considerate. And I'm sure there'll be some that won't, but I think we have to do whatever we can.
I have a couple of things, uh, if I may. The, uh, I've noticed that a lot of people are just eating, they get stuff from takeout and they'll sit there on Main Street eating it. Saw a whole group of people today, about fifteen, looked like school, high school kids with teachers. I'm not sure what they were, but they were just sitting there eating like you do on Main Street. And they can't wear a mask while they're eating. No one can yet. They haven't invented that mask yet. But, um, and also my other question is, uh, how are we gonna control the amount of people coming into the village? Because if you say we're twenty-five percent open and we get a, you know, even half of a normal weekend crowd, that's way more than twenty-five percent capacity. So, uh, I think that, uh, that's a bigger issue that we're not even really thinking about is, who's gonna show up and how many are they? And, you know, what are they, but they're already coming now and there's nothing to do. So if we open twenty-five percent, well, you know, how are we gonna control this amount of people? Or are we, you, you know, do we even try?
If you open twen-, sorry, if you open twenty-five percent, that's twenty-five percent more than what people have available for themselves to do today. So as, as more and more things open, it theoretically draws people off of the sidewalks and into the shops, which is good for the shop owners, good for the restaurants. I, to me, the biggest problem is the crowds on Main Street this weekend with nothing to do. They, they have very limited, they have limited food options, they have some. Um, there are some retail stores that they can go into, but not a lot.
Right, but.
I just see these.
Really what I'm asking, what, what I'm asking is, we have no control over how many people decide to come to Cold Spring. And if it's a massive amount of people that, that leaves our twenty-five percent plan in the dust, then what are we gonna do about that? Are we gonna turn people away at the top of the hill, uh, and tell them they can't come to our town? I mean, like.
No.
I think a clarification, uh, one thing is, I think twenty-five percent is a number that came up. I, at some point, restaurants are gonna have a percentage that they will be able to, you know, allow in, whether it's twenty-five percent, fifty percent seating in, in their establishment, which, you know, which, which is gonna help, uh, you know, that's really restrictive also. So, uh, and I don't think people can continue with that with like even fifty percent, maybe even seventy-five, I don't know. On, on good weekends, if people are gonna have to wait and you can only serve, I don't know how that all works. But just as far as the percentage goes, I don't think we know what that is. Or I don't, I don't know what the governor said on, on what the percentage is supposed to be. So I think twenty-five percent might have been the number we came up with, but like, will be allowed into an establishment, like, like a restaurant for seating.
In terms of people eating along Main Street, that, if, if we have a bunch more hundreds of people in town and there's half of them are sitting on the benches eating, you know.
I mean, I guess it's.
Do we have to set up a eating area somewhere for people to go eat or they can?
No, but that's just it. The, the restaurants are not permitted to have outdoor dining areas.
I'll talk about takeout.
Right, yes, but communal eating is, is not something that is, that is permitted prior to phase one. Right, so, so outdoor dining is, is not permitted prior to phase one. I don't think it's permitted in phase one. I don't know whether it's permitted in phase two.
Well, it's taking place already.
On the park benches.
And some people are also, um, eating on St. Mary's lawn. They're setting up the blankets and eating there. They seem to be spaced, they seem to be fine, but that's, we have no control of private property. We can't say you can go there, we can't say you can't go there. Um, that's up to St. Mary's to do. I haven't seen crowds there. I have seen small groups with a blanket having some lunch or whatever, or just in, sitting and relaxing. And that's basically the only other place there is around here. We've closed everything else, we've closed the parks.
Although, although, what, what, someone participating, uh, and I can't remember who it was, uh, commented that people are sitting on their front stoops and eating, uh, which I could see happen very easily. There are a number of stoops on Main Street which has steps and it's gotta be really simple to just take your slice of pizza or whatever you have in your hand and go sit there and eat.
Well, I think then it's incumbent on everybody who controls a, a doorstep on Main Street to make sure that there are, that the people that are there are maintaining proper social distance. And if it means putting red spots on your, on your stoops six feet apart, then I, I don't think that's an unreasonable thing to ask people to do. Seems like, seems easy to me, I would do it.
You know, rope, it's private property, it would be roped off, you know.
Well, they can. Yeah.
Uh, one thing that I think we can do also is, uh, eliminates like any, like sandwich boards or merchandise that's sold outside, if it's impeding, you know, if it's, if it's even, if it's narrowing the sidewalk in the least. Uh, you know, I don't think there's a need for that. I, I think we should try to keep the sidewalks clean, you know, as clean as we can. If there's gonna be a lot of people, we don't need other obstructions also, like two or three sandwich boards or whatever, you know, people have. So I think that's one thing we could consider. Um, you know, some people stack merchandise outside, we want that, you know. Will it hurt their business or won't it? Um, I, I don't think it will, I just think it'll, it'll make the streets a lot easier to, uh, maneuver on. That's one thing. I think a couple of other things that were brought up, I think Fran brought one up, was like, maybe, uh, blocking off parking areas. And, uh, yes, we will lose parking, but maybe break, uh, block off some parking areas in front of restaurants, maybe the ones that are, have narrow sidewalks. And, um, this is pushing people out closer to traffic, but, you know, if you fenced it off or did something that, that, I'm not saying to do this, I'm saying, this is an idea out there that we should think on, and maybe there's a way to do it. And I think it's done in, in other municipalities. Uh, I was talking to Michelle today, and I think she said they do it in some places in Yonkers. Um, you know, they'll have steel gates or rails that are actually put in the parking lot near the, you know, near the traffic. And maybe the people would walk around there. That's, that's just an idea. You know, people would say block off, it's really tough to block off Main Street and closes the, the whole village down. Uh, we do have MTA, you know, and people riding the trains. Um, we do have businesses on the other side of the track and people have to get to those. So, um, I think we can consider how that would look and what that would do. I think it pushes, uh, drive, you know, visitors to the back streets and I'm not sure how happy everyone would be with that. Um, but they, I'm sure those are gonna come up. I know, I'm sure, I'm sure that's gonna come up. And, you know, it's, it's something that, you know, I think we should look at it. Is there a way to do that? Is there a way to close it down? Is, but it's very tough in our village, so, you know, those are the things that, you know, I think you can do. Um, I mean, that you could think about doing, I'm not sure else. I mean, once we open this up, maybe there's some, some miracle solutions, uh, I'd be willing to hear those.
I'm, I'm less worried about people getting to MTA than I am about people on side streets being able to, being unable to get out of their street or onto their street if we close down Main Street.
Not to mention it, emergency services, like if there's an emergency, getting police and fire trucks up and down the street as needed. That would be an issue if people were sitting on, at tables in, you know, in the parking areas. I, I, that just seems really unsafe to me.
Why would we ever consider putting tables on the roadbed?
But it's been.
Original idea.
Seen a bunch of articles about that, so.
The original idea that I talked about last time we met was to extend, uh, onto the sidewalk, some tables for restaurants and then, um, rope off a part of the street so people, then rope it off a part of the street so people could just sort of walk around the tables.
Why would we want to extend outdoor seating? It's a problem today. I'm sorry.
I know, but.
Problem last year, it was a problem last year.
I know, because they, because, uh, there's a difference between us allowing it and us not allowing it. And in a situation where restaurants can only open maybe twenty-five or fifty percent of their tables and they wanna add one or two or three or four more tables outside.
So they wanna, so they wanna get a hundred percent of their seating, I know, in their house, in their store or out on the sidewalk and/or the roadbed.
Well, the regulation that I've, that I've looked at basically says you can only get twenty-five or fifty percent of your indoor seating. And then if you could put tables outside that are still six feet apart and add maybe two more tables, um, or three more tables, it might be helpful. And that depends on the individual restaurants and that, and spacing and so on and so forth. Some of the restaurants are small, some of them may not need it at all. And then that, that requires single file of people walking around whatever tables are on the sidewalks if that happens.
It's crazy, Fran. It's, it seems to me that if the objective is to limit the number of people seated inside an area while they're eating, and then suggested them, oh, okay, add some other tables outside and maintain social distancing between those tables and on those tables, right? So, so the tables have to be six feet apart and the tables, uh, at the table, do you have to maintain a distance of six feet from one another?
Not if you're a family, no, not if you're a family or, or, you know, husband and wife or.
Okay, okay, but, but if you're, if you're not a family, do you have to maintain six feet distance?
Then you can't have a table. I mean, you can't, you can't do both. I mean, if you're not a family, you can't sit strangers at a table. Uh, it doesn't make sense. And, and I know Connecticut was doing some of this in some of their cities. Um, and it, and it's something that, that may be more complicated or, or take up more space than I think we could deal with right now, but it was just an idea.
Well, if you wanna go to extreme idea, I mean, there's a couple. I mean, we could close all parking on Main Street. I mean, it just, uh, because it'll.
Put tables in the parking areas?
No, I'm not saying that, it'll give more space, and yes, and maybe there would be. I, I think the reason it was brought up to give more, uh, tables is because, because the businesses have been shut. Their livelihoods are at stake and they're only gonna be able to operate at say twenty-five to fifty percent. So I think every table is gonna help. So I think if there's a way to do it safely, I'm interested in it. If it's not, then, you know, maybe we're just a village the way we're set up that that can't happen. But I think we should entertain it and it's, I think it's for, you know, my, my reason and the reason why I would have more tables outside. Um, and, and you know, you know how I'm feeling, I was during the regular season and, you know, I'm not really for a lot of that. But I think in these circumstances, then people's livelihoods are at stake. And if, and I don't see how a restaurant can make it or, or a bar or anything, if that's what their livelihood is based on with limited seating, especially from, I mean, it's tough enough to get through a winter, like, you know, and, and, you know, in Cold Spring, you know. And you, and just like, you know, in any other tourist area, you have to, you have to do it and make your money when the season's there. And we've, we cut, so winter wasn't, was not there, our spring season was not there, and we're pushing it out to a. And we've, we cut, so winter wasn't, was not there, our spring season was not there and we're pushing it out to a smaller, smaller amount of months. So that's my concern and I think we should be, you know, we have to take everything into consideration. And I think, you know, the shop owners are one, residents are one, you know, the whole village, we have to look at the whole thing. You know, holistically, not just like, you know, through one lens and say, okay, let's just concentrate on making shop owners, you know, profitable or giving them more of a chance without looking at the residents, seeing what's happening with them and how that affects their life. So I think the thing is that you, I think we're talking about it. I think that's good. And maybe there is no answer. I don't know. I mean, if you have a boat that fits six people, you can't put ten in it. I don't know how, how it works. I'm just saying, I think we should think of all options and see if there is a way. If somebody says, why can't, why don't we close down Main Street? Say, okay, well, then the questions are, what about the people at the bottom of Main Street? What about all the people that have one-way streets? Where do they go? How do they turn around? How do they get out of the village?
How do commuters get to the train station?
What's that?
How do commuters get to the train station also?
Right. Or if we close up parking, where will people park if you close off Main Street? And then, you know, maybe there's options for that and that has to be thought out. So, you know, again, I, I think the, uh, we can, we, I think we should start, you know, you know, like I said last meeting, we should start thinking about stuff. And if people come up with ideas, the one-way pedestrian thing, I think that's a good start. I think not having clutter on Main Street, I think that's something else that we can do. I think putting signs up, we can do. I think those are initial steps. And then start seeing if we can address something and see if we can make, make things work a little better. Anything else?
We have a couple of hands raised.
Okay, um, for, just like one thing, do you guys, are you guys all comfortable with, with having signs made? Like, you know, saying, you know, whatever about masks and wearing them and crowded streets. I don't know how we phrase it, but I, I can have them made, laminated, put on all the telephone poles. And then we can also, I think the only way to put arrows on the sidewalk is to paint them. Marie looked into like arrows, you, some appliques, but there's nothing really that's affordable that you could do. So we would have to make, you know, get a stencil and maybe, you know, write something on that too, or have something custom made and we could do that. Uh, is everyone fine with moving ahead with something like that? Those stages?
Yes.
Yes.
I am. But I don't wanna paint the sidewalks though. We have to come up with something better.
What's that?
I don't wanna paint the sidewalks with an arrow.
I think painting the arrows on the sidewalks isn't so bad.
If there was a way, uh, I don't know how else.
I wanna think of another way. I'm okay with it, but I'll think of something better.
Okay. Definitely. Okay, so uh I'll move ahead with those steps. Um, okay, so now how do we do this? We just call on someone and then our moderator will punch them in?
Yes.
Is that right?
That's what we agreed, yeah.
So um first one I see on my list here is Tara Vamos. Are you there Tara?
Yep, I am. Hi.
Hi, how are you? Thanks for joining.
I'm good. I'm excited about this conversation because I think it needs to happen. Um, I.
Before you go on, could you just stay, could you just stay where you live so?
Absolutely. My name is Tara Vamos. I live at Six Rock Street.
Thank you.
And uh, sure. And I would really like the village to look at eliminating parking on Main Street. Because that would, um, it would decrease the number of visitors totally for this initial phase that we're in. And I think all the way through phase one, you're just looking at creating more space and kind of drawing the numbers of people in the village down that are on the, I'm just talking about on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday. And then I think if we, if we could do one-way traffic between the traffic light and Fair Street and have Fair Street run one way from Main Street through to uh, through to ninety. We would have, you know, basically three extra lanes worth of space, which we could use for having more space on sidewalks for people to walk around. But then as we um got to opening a little bit further, it could be something where we could allow restaurants or other shops, you know, if you're talking about these small shops too. If they're only allowed to have two or three people in the store, it might be helpful for them to have some of their business out on the sidewalk where people could shop their wares on the sidewalk as well. But I, I think it would, eliminating one lane of traffic and two lanes of parking would mean that there would be less total people initially and that after that, there would be some space for businesses to start using because, yeah, running a restaurant at twenty-five percent capacity or fifty percent capacity isn't uh, isn't gonna make up for the fact that they've already missed a couple of months. And plus, I think it would be fun and festive and lovely. And besides that, um, if those arrows that were painted looked especially nice or interesting or had poppy colors or something like that. I really like the idea of painting something that's six feet apart all up and down the sidewalk. Flowers or something like that because I think people just don't comprehend what six feet is very well. Some people.
Eric, can you restate your, your suggestion? I got the no parking on Main Street. From where to where?
No parking on Main Street on Saturdays or Sundays.
Yeah, got it.
And also um one-way traffic coming down the hill from the traffic light. And then making Fair Street all one way going from Maine out to um from Main Street out to ninety. Or running that the other way around. If there was a way of saying local traffic only, I would say that would make sense too, but I think that's more difficult to enforce.
Okay, so uh, back to eliminate parking on Main Street from where, not when, from where to where?
I would say from nine D down to um, down to the spot where it tees off because you can't cross the train tracks.
Lund Terrace.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. You're aware that Fair Street right now is one-way only? Found on Sat- Sundays?
Yes.
Okay, and so you would, you would um have one lane of traffic. I'm assuming cordoned off on Main Street.
Yeah.
From um ninety to Lund Terrace.
Yes.
No, one way from ninety to Fair.
Yeah, one way from ninety to Fair. Sorry. Yeah.
And no parking from ninety to Lund.
And one way from ninety to Fair. Right?
Yes, and the cordoned off lane should definitely be wide enough to accommodate fire trucks and ambulances.
Now that would be, okay, gotcha.
Can I, can I just, uh, I've always heard, you know, for years that, you know, parking on Main Street is a problem because the businesses suffer because there isn't enough parking. Uh, and now we want to eliminate parking on Main Street. And I, I like your idea. I'm just wondering where the business owners are gonna fall on this because it's always been an issue that there's not enough parking uh, on Main Street for the business owners. So now we tell people that they're not gonna park on Main Street at all. And I know there's alternative places, but is that, you know, are there other business owners who aren't gonna like that idea at all?
One thing that I've wondered about is if we could also use some parking at the high school or if we're at the point where we were really um trying to ramp up the number of people in the village. If we could do more with the shuttle for bringing people from parking areas or, you know, have some other shuttle that brings people from parking areas in. But um mostly I don't have an answer to that. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you. Marie, you're totally in the dark now. We see a silhouette. We can't see your pretty face.
I understand it. And you're not down at the river because the river hasn't moved at all in the past hour and a half.
Long sunset. It's beautiful. Okay, next person I have, I have Jen Herskowitz. Sorry if I'm butchering that. I'm just seeing one, one full. Are you there Jenna?
I am, hi. You've got it right.
I can't quite hear you.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I don't know if I would have to, is it any better for people?
I have terrible hearing, so.
I just didn't get to check my mic or anything, but um.
Also, stay where you live?
Yes, I live at sixty-two Main Street, near Stone Street. I, I, I guess at this point, I've lost my, my sense of exactly what what to be sharing with you, but I appreciate that we're acknowledging that people are sitting and eating takeout outside of our front doors for prolonged periods of the day, uh, particularly throughout the weekend. And I, I do hope that we assess how we might restrict vehicle traffic and think about capping the number of, you know, ways that we might cap the number of, of people who are traveling through at any moment. To, because these are also our homes. I, I, I don't know. I, I also just wonder, you know, many of us who live here are not venturing out as we always do. You know, at high, at peak season, at peak times, we try to not get into the crowd. And now, you know, it's even more, it feels even more necessary, but um I don't know what, you know, what other things we're thinking can make space between the people who live here, particularly on Main Street.
Okay, thank you. I think one point that I didn't bring up and I think that Jenna just brought up is that there are a lot of people that live on Main Street also, you know, it's not just businesses. There are a lot of folks that live uh up above businesses and, or, you know, owners that live there also. So I think that's one point we have to keep in mind too. That's another, you know, another group that, you know, you have to be considerate of. And when we make any, uh, any.
And private homes.
Yes.
There are a number of private homes on Main Street.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, um, next we have, uh, I'm just going in order here, so not, not, not a not being favorites to anyone. Ruth Ann Cullumbar, hello.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, can you just state your address?
Okay, sixteen Stone Street.
Go ahead. Thank you.
I just, I would, I would be in favor of the one-way walking on Main Street. I think that was a great thing for you guys to consider and to go about. And I think it's great that Steve wants to find a delicate way to add it to Main Street. As far as the no parking and the one-way, I think that that's gonna definitely involve the police, the ambulance and the fire looking at that carefully. When Fair Street is one-way on the weekend, I live on Stone, so you know, we have, we're one-way also. But when Fair is one-way on the weekend, you allow parking on Fair Street. And I can see that as a real challenge between church on the weekends, if church can finally open, um, emergency vehicles. So I think the one-way on Main Street really needs a lot of input from other people. I think residents in the village, I agree with Tara, I mean, not Tara, the person who spoke just before me, that when you live in the village, you accept that the weekends are crazy and you either stay home or you get out of Dodge. And to make it more challenging for us, lower village residents to get in and out of our homes, I think would be a real challenge and a safety concern. That's just my two cents. And I also agree with you what you decided to do as far as large events in the village. So good job. Thank you so much for taking care of that tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ruth Ann. Does anyone know, uh, Fran, do you know where, where churches fit in with the phasing?
They just came out today with, um, I think the governor said that there can be some, some events that are no more than ten people, which to me means baptisms, funerals or, and I don't, and I uh, I just heard that today. So ten people is not, nothing like they're gonna have masses or services at this point. Uh, the governor, uh, the, the cardinal has also come out with his phases and I believe he's got five phases. I guess the governor has four, so the cardinal decided to have five um, in terms of how churches will, will open. But the first thing I heard today from the governor and from the cardinal's office was small events of ten people or less could be what they could do and possibly some larger events if they could handle them in parking lots and, and the parishioners would stay in their cars. I don't know anything about how any of that's gonna work. And the only thing I know is what I've heard from the governor's office and from the archdiocese, which is the Catholic. I don't know how the other religions are gonna handle it or whether, what their regulations are. That just came out today.
Yesterday Cuomo said, um, there's apparently a coalition of religious organizations that he was reaching out to. And he mentioned that, uh, capping it at ten people. And it was going to be, his organization, maybe the state of New York, uh, was going to be coordinating with a list, a fairly long list of organizations, religious organizations, faith groups.
Okay, next up we have Robin, uh, sorry, Ryan Trow. Robin Trower. Uh, Ryan, you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
State, state your name and address.
Uh, this is, this is Ryan Trow. Uh, I live at Four Stone Street. I'm, I'm the one who had suggested the idea of, of closing down Main Street in, in phases and opening up to the businesses. Um, I just wanted to echo what, what Tara said. Um, you know, I don't, I don't think it's a question of I, I, of, of whether we do it or not. I, I think in, in some way it has to be done. Other cities and communities are doing it around the country right now. New York City has found a way to do it. They're shutting down streets. Savannah, Charleston, and then smaller communities like Providence, Town Road Island that have a lot of seasonal tourists are finding ways to shut down their, their main streets, their public spaces. I, I think it's a necessity. Um, and so I think, I think the point made, the last point made is, is a good one. I think we have to talk, think about police department, highway department, how you actually do it. I think you could, I like the idea of one lane of traffic or you could shut down sections of Main Street and allow certain cross streets to be open. And I think what you do is you do it almost the way they do Little Italy on the weekends in New York City. You do it for a period of time. You bring out a bunch of tables during lunch or during dinner to allow the restaurants to have their moment. Then you allow the shops to have their moment. Um, so I think you could think about one lane traffic down Main Street or you're shutting down sections block by block of Main Street and thinking about how we create these centers for eating and centers for shopping. We can use Depot Square, we can use the waterfront and West Street. Um, and then we just think about sections, you know, every block or two up and down Main Street where we close portions off to allow for seating for eating and, and for the shops to have some of their wares outside. I mean, the reality is, what will happen is other villages and, and towns in the Hudson Valley are going to do this. Um, and people will quickly find out where you can go and safely, you know, which villages are open for business and which aren't. And so I think that'll be even more detrimental to all local businesses if we aren't able to be nimble and creative. But I think it's just a time to get creative. I mean, we can, we can sit here and think of a thousand reasons why this will be challenging. But the good is, is we're a small community. We're not New York City. We're not Savannah, Georgia. We're actually, the, the problem is actually relatively simple when compared to those communities. And so I, I think it's just a necessity. And I, I've spoken with a number of folks in the community, business owners. Um, and I think everyone agrees that we have to find a way to use this space because we're lucky enough to have all of this public space. So that, that would be a, that would be it for me.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Cold Spring Cheese. Hello.
Hello, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, again.
Well, in addition to being, this is Tim Haskell and my wife Rebecca. Uh, in addition to owning Cold Spring Cheese Shop, we also live at thirteen Church Street. Uh, I get, you know, some people have said some of the things that I was going to say, but anecdotally, today, um, I was in my shop and there was a family of four on the bench that is pretty much directly in front of my shop, none of them wearing masks. And as often is the case, the two parents weren't really wrangling in their children who were running all over the place. And, um, and that's something that I, I see a lot of here is that it's um uh, a lot of parents uh taking a walk and their children unmasked who get, who are, because they're children, um, are, are more than comfortable getting very close to you. And, um, and, you know, uh, so the reason why I make this point is that I actually was sort of sheltered in my shop until they decided to get up and go. And the reason why they were sitting there is they were eating, they were eating. And the reason why they were sitting there is they were eating, they were eating. Um, not something from my shop, but, um, from another one. Um, so I, I, there was a couple of points I wanted to make, but, um, regarding that first, potentially considering removing the benches. I know we're saying, well, we can't, uh, eliminate, uh, more places for people to eat because it hurts the restaurants, but I, I don't think that the benches are actually, um, great places to be eating your meal anyway. They're not tables, and, um, and it's, and it's, it's just, uh, and, and out of all the, I mean, they're close to the, to the shops, especially in the narrower spots, which mine isn't, I understand, but, um, it is when people are not, um, respecting social distancing. And, uh, the, and, you know, one thing that we're all being very polite about, um, which I understand, is that there are, as we've seen nationwide, a lot of, um, anti-maskers and, um, who, uh, who will get very angry if you suggest to them that they need to wear a mask and will, out of, uh, political defiance, um, intentionally not wear it. Um, so I guess giving space for the people who don't want to mix it up with them, but do want to avoid them, the more space we can have to walk around them, meaning, which I know has been several, said several times, getting rid of parking so that we can safely walk into areas around people who, who are, who do not feel the same way about it as we do, um, would, would, I think, be very safe for everyone. And my final point, um, is that, you know, we haven't opened, even though we're considered an essential business, we could have been open this entire time. Um, and, um, and there's a couple of other businesses like that, so it's not just about retail, it's about people, businesses like mine who are getting to the point where we kind of have to start thinking about opening. Um, the coffee shop, which is right next to us, being another one, two places, if I might, you know, suggest, um, Bezos Cavaliers, to suggest two places that are, are pretty popular. And when, and neither one of us intend on having people in the shop. Um, I don't think, I mean, I think we all do realize because of the to-go restaurants, how crowded it will be, it could be, but just think, I mean, even more so with the coffee shop, just to think of how many people with those two places right next to each other, how many people that is, so it's like, even if you're going all one way and down another way, there's going to be a lot of people converging. And I just feel like the best way to deal with it is just giving more, um, uh, area for people to, to cross in. Um, so, I mean, I, I know several people said the no parking, and, but I would also say, maybe consider removing benches.
Okay.
Rebecca wanted to add.
Go ahead, yep.
Sorry, sorry, I got a long list, and I'm going to go fast because I know you've got a lot.
No, that's okay, just, I'm down here at the river, it's great.
Piggybacking, piggybacking on what Tim said in terms of the closing of the parking. And going back to what Fran Murphy's saying about how some businesses don't need that additional parking. So I was going to suggest perhaps just closing one lane of parking, of
That's what Tara was saying.
It was just one lane?
Yeah.
Um, be, okay, so if you just closed, I'm sorry, if you only had parking on one lane so that you don't, this, this doesn't become a double-edged sword. Um, because it's great to open the streets, but at the same time, it could make it become even more of a destination. Uh, so just throwing that out there. Uh, Steve and Fran, I had, I mean, Marie, early, I had talked to you guys earlier about, um, street grips. There are these special stickers that go on concrete and can be removed without a trace. They run from about $80 to $100. Uh, Tim and I were talking, and we really think street grips are essential. Um, they could be, we could, we would be willing to volunteer, uh, to launch a crowdfunding campaign if the chamber, um, or, you know, the village can't afford to do it. Um, I've seen this done in other districts and have several other examples. I just haven't sent them to Marie yet. In Tim's response about the benches, uh, I was thinking caution tape on benches. I know that, you know, there's a cost associated with removing the benches and storing them and all of that, and then putting them back out, so I was thinking, you could do, people will not listen to caution tape, as we've seen through the use of the hiking trails, uh, but, but maybe that's what we are encouraging, is no eating on the Main Street. The park, you, you park, you visit, you order, and you leave. You know, everyone's hungry, they order their food and they take it. Um, number three, I, this many are not going to, uh, agree with this comment, but, um, our Main Street has, oh, has a history of serving visitors sometimes over the needs of residents. And it's a wonderful time to really think about how businesses can unite to truly serve the needs of residents. Um, I have, Tim is not on board with me yet, but I have been advocating for an open Monday through Thursday. Um, we would see new residents coming to our Main Street in ways that we've not seen before. Um, number four, use of underutilized areas. So I was thinking about the coffee shop and the cheese shop right next to each other, and I was thinking about what your idea of using one side of the street to go up and one side of the street to go down, but I was thinking if there's lines at both of those businesses, those, those, um, you know, that would be a lot of, uh, a lot of traffic in that area, so I was thinking of using underutilized lots, perhaps getting lines, so taking a look inventory of what lots are near food businesses, um, where you can create new paths. Um, I, Tim was saying, uh, how, I said, you know, maybe we can encourage people to go to Haldane Parking Lot, I don't know. Uh, but that's just an idea. Uh, the last thing I was going to say is, um, breakneck, uh, I'm not sure if we have a say in that, but breakneck being closed, I, I, you know, is going to maybe, uh, help with the amounts of people coming in. So just encouraging it to, to, to remain closed for a while.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't see any more little blue hands. Is there anyone else? Anything else from the board?
No, I think it was a great, um, meeting.
Rebecca, the, uh, the grips, street grips, where, where do we find those? Oh, she's gone.
She may have commuted again.
She said she sent it to Marie.
Oh, and so the street grips, you know, I researched them a while back because we were using them in a district in Brooklyn, and, um, I have to find the company. I found one company and I sent it to Marie, but I can look more into it. Basically, we would have, you know, the chamber was talking about possibly designing something, so we would design something, send it to a graphic designer, and, uh, and then order them to be custom-made. They run $80 to $100.
Yeah, Rebecca, I, I did contact the company, uh, not the one from, uh, New York Presbyterian Hospital, not, not the one from NYPH, but the other one. And they said that, that, that applique was not warranted to be applied to cement or concrete.
Okay, so I'll find another one because there are, there are companies that, that make this specifically for stadiums and places with large, you know, amounts of people.
Yeah, and I found a, a number of appliques that are used in warehouses, et cetera, which can, uh, handle very heavy traffic, but they need a relatively smooth surface like linoleum or, um, uh, something like that. I did find one company that did do, uh, uh, tape that could be applied to concrete or, uh, cement, but they don't do anything other than straight tape. They, no design of anything.
Yeah, I can.
We can use spray paint that can be pressure washed also.
Oh, yes, spray paint, painting is okay. The problem is.
Pressure wash it after. There's types of paint that can be washed off fairly easily. We don't have to use.
The, the problem with the tape is that the concrete, the cement is not smooth enough for it to adhere, adhere to.
Yeah, um, I'll find the company that I, that I was working with in the past.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think we have a request from, uh, reporter Michael Turton. Michael, you there? I'm, I'm, I'm hearing the moderator saying something.
Um, I got a message that he wanted to speak. I don't know if he's still on. I'm sorry, I don't see him. I did get a message that he wanted to speak, but I don't see him.
Can hear her all the way down at the river.
It's amazing, isn't it? The acoustics down there are excellent.
This is the longest sunset, unbelievable.
Beautiful, though.
The water's so still, too.
Isn't it something, Steve?
I'm sorry?
It's wonderful how still the night is.
Yeah. Must be the night air.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I don't know if we're getting Mike on there or not.
I just sent him a text. I sent him a text, but I don't see him on, I know.
Oh, unmute him.
Islands Car, H Current is where he is. He needs to be unmuted. It's H Current.
Okay, can you hear me?
There you go. There you are. We knew you were there.
I'm feeling very left out there for a minute. I wondered regarding the signage of the village, you, you talked about a number of signs tonight. The chamber is talking about signage. Uh, businesses who aren't necessarily in the chamber are probably doing signage. Will there be any attempt to coordinate, uh, the look and the message of signage? Um, I think there've been talk about the chamber and the board getting together to talk.
Uh, yeah, uh, they had reached out to us. I'm not sure where, where that's at, or if they have, or how they're following up.
The last I heard, they, they were going to present us with something when they got it ready. I haven't seen anything.
I, I think, and I think they're concerned, or their, uh, objective was, uh, more for the stores and signs in the stores for the customers
Yes.
and safety there.
Okay.
I, I, yeah, I think like Fran said, that they, once they had designs, they were going to, uh, run them by us. I think that's how it went.
That was the last I saw from Eliza, the last email that came through.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, well, uh, this has been new and it's been good, and, uh, thank you all for joining. Uh, we'll get used to this, I guess, and get, get better at it. Hopefully it was, uh, was bearable. I think we'll take, you know, we'll definitely take everyone's, uh, comments, uh, into consideration and, uh, and see where they go and come up with the pros and cons of a lot of things. But I, I want everyone to know we're on, we're trying to be on top of this as much as you can be on top of it. Your hands are really tied in so many ways. Regarding the parks, uh, we, uh, Richard Shea and Nancy and I all lobbied for the closures as soon as we saw what was happening, as soon as the weather broke. Um, that's totally up to them. Um, you know, they, they closed hopefully with some of the pressure we put on. Um, I think they want to do the right thing, too, though. Um, but the governor had started off by saying parks should be open, so it's a difficult one to go against. Um, so I'm not sure where, I haven't been in contact. I don't know if they have plans to open anytime soon, but we'll, we'll keep our eye on that. It's, uh, definitely, uh, a huge concern as far as I'm concerned. And, uh, well, you know, that's about it. Um, everybody, uh, please stay safe and, uh, and civil. And I know the pressure's definitely mounting. I think, uh, everybody's been really good. I think it's, it's incredible. You have a, 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 a society that runs on, you know, top speed and the brakes are had to be put on, and, uh, so everybody should be, uh, you know, patting themselves on the back, and, uh, we have to move forward and got, get through this, and, uh, hopefully everyone stays civil and we, uh, and use our brains, um, and, uh, come up with some good ideas and keep everybody, uh, healthy and, uh, and everybody's business running, and so, so thank you all. And on that, I would, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. It was a great meeting, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.